Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April Planning Commission Meeting. If I could ask you to join her. Go through roll call, Warren Shaw.
President.
Bill Kaminsky.
That's it.
Sue Van Spahn.
Here.
James Rath.
Here.
Sarah Linger.
Here.
And Steve.
Here.
And Rod Yagan, President. Okay. Minutes were sent out. Any comments? Updates? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. You can do it to your own. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, tonight's meeting, as far as I'm aware, only has one agenda item. Still correct, Eric?
Correct.
All right, that is PLPC 2024-0016, or 624 through 626 second app. Is the applicant here, or I know Architect, President? Do you want to come up and give us a brief overview of the project?
How are you? I'm Adam Basala, Architect, working on project 624, 626 second app, which is the former Hot Dog Charlie's building, I think it's most well known as. It's a basic version of the former restaurant space into a four unit apartment project. It also falls kind of necessary and significant repairs to be inside and outside of the building. Close to the street route. There was sort of a addition, and I'm not sure exactly. I think it was maybe the kitchen and some other parts of the restaurant, but there was a fire in it at some point. Addition. So even for this sort of projects. There are a brace, the rear of the building, which include two decks, which are used as egress components. Apartments and trash corral and five apartment spaces. We've also proposed changes to the facade, changing it from a commercial first floor facade to a more essential appropriate four units are independent of each other. There's a common hallway on the first floor for lower units, but it's not really necessary issue that has to exit out the back. It's kind of a debate right now between the building department regarding apartment sprinklers. But they would be provided with a big, big part.
Yeah, thank you. So on this item, it's on for site plan review. We will need to, I think it's unlisted, so we'll need to declare lead agency. I'm not sure, did we ever resolve whether or not items like this, unlisted ones, have to come back for second after we declare applications complete? They will. So we can't go back, except for public hearing, right? Okay. So at this, at this point, we're offering any initial feedback on the design and the drawing set presented to us? Turn it over to the other commissioners. Any, any questions or comments?
I guess, I'm wondering if there's a basement in the existing?
There is, it's not kind of maybe it's going to crawl space to the basement, I would say. It's kind of a an amalgamation of buildings there. So we're also looking, part of the project is also to properly divide the buildings. Right now, I'm not sure which number it is, but the building to the north kind of shares a wall at the moment. It's like a nautical restaurant, I think it's called. But at the moment, you can kind of see right through the two buildings, so there's also requirement and a desire to split the two buildings. But yeah, there's a basement, but it wouldn't be used for anything. Running utilities.
Do you do you know yet what colors you contribute?
We don't, but it would be at the moment, paint, that would be slumped, like Sherwin-Williams Historic Palette. I think the idea is to, is to match these, the same upper, I'm calling it the upper siding, siding on the upper half of the building. It's currently maybe six or seven inch wide wood.
And the color, how about windows are vinyl, is that white, I assume?
I think we're, at the moment, they're white. I think there would be a consideration for the window color once I may have a chance to look at paint colors.
The modifications are only to the kind of the peach building in the photo, right?
Right.
So not, you're, I only ask because you just mentioned the nautical, former nautical, whatever, barn restaurant, that looks like a, another building further north.
Right, that one's green.
Yeah.
But yeah, the Hot Dog Charlie's currently has kind of, it looks like almost three doors on the front. Kind of two that are recessed and one in the center.
Oh, yeah.
So we'd be able to get altering the center door would remain, and we'd alter the, the sides to the left, right?
Yep.
The upper facade, the rough opening stay as they are.
I thought the, the packet was pretty well put together. It's a lot more detail than we get on a lot of submissions. The elevation views were very helpful. I think. Did you talk a little bit about the exterior cladding on the west side, so the street facing side, as I see some of the leaders point out repair and painting existing wood, and then the lower half just new wood siding to match existing? Is it the original siding material still kind of available? Is it just two by four cladding? What is that?
You know, I'm not totally sure. I've got my head where it is. But I think you know, the typical kind of root is like some sort of vinyl product or some sort of interior product, but in this case, they're so little square footage is actually being repaired, that I think we could actually, it's a higher quality product, like we're just making matches to pay for the lumber. So I think, I think we could safely say would be wood, that would be made to match the
Only other maybe architectural comment I was thinking of are where the the trim details are called out under the windows, wondering if it might even be possible to do planters or, or something. Wouldn't be a deal breaker for me, but you, the suggestion, I wonder if you'd consider?
For the front?
Yeah.
I mean, everything's other consideration. I'm, I'm kind of also, like, this is in either a current or assumed to be current historic district, is that correct? It's a little bit, not sure what the current status is.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So, you know, the I'm not sure where planters fall in terms of like, is that starting to suggest something that's more or less sort of, they'll be better, things like that. So I think I kind of err on the side of caution, sort of adding more stuff.
This is historic district, I only ask because in our staff notes, I didn't would that make it a
Yeah, I, I had some confusion on this particular historic district and also the law. The appearance, the sort of guidelines, the district, I'm not sure, is the HRC.
But there is a, that might be a study.
Right. It's a study, I don't know.
Well, it's not a study.
But it's a, it's a federal historic district right now, not a local historic district.
Correct.
So there's not local restrictions on, like, like the downtown district that the HRC reviews, it's like for tax credits.
Right.
Okay, that's smart.
So they would have the ability to apply for to start tax credits. But I don't know if they're under the guidelines of our local historic.
Even separate from that though, does that make the action of type one, being a federal might be administrator thing we need to look at?
I don't think so. I think that's recorded. The facility that I don't know that this type of project is still fall under a certain category. But it's certainly
Okay. That was it for me, that one comment. I think otherwise I'd need sense of what you're proposing. I think it's well laid out. I like that there's adequate parking in the, in the rear alley side. It's five spaces, right?
Yes. I think we got fifty feet of width, so.
At least, it's more than one per unit, so.
I think that leaves enough to get proper trash corral.
I'm just wondering why should one of those parking spaces be ADA? I'm not sure what's required, but
I'm not, I don't believe that four units crosses the threshold for ADA requirements. Additionally, I think we could, I should probably verify, but I believe there's probably ADA parking on the street as part of the former restaurants that are
So, any other feedback for the designer?
Yeah, I have one, and that is the first floor front of the building seems to have a, the windows seem really tight together. It's just a little, this is just constructive criticism to consider. It seems like there's a lot of windows and they're serving a bedroom, a living room, and sort of an open living kitchen. And I wonder if that rid of one window, you could face what I'm really reacting to, honestly, is the pilasters sitting underneath the windows, which is just not
So
They're simulating structure, which would never be under a window. So if you could slide the pilasters over to be between windows, it would I think that the elevation would work a lot better, under, right?
Under the second story windows?
Right.
So you prefer to see three windows on the lower level?
Right.
So based on kind of if you kind of zoom around the neighborhood a little bit, the majority of buildings seem to have kind of a in a party of the lower half of the building being discreet from the upper half of the building. So that's kind of why I try to maintain some level of discretion between A and B, if you want to consider it that way. And also, I mean, to be honest, it it looked really cheap on the bottom half. Which I think is similar kind of logic as to why people in the surrounding buildings would provisionally have more windows or kind of more activity at the lower part of the building.
Like, I'm not suggesting that they have to, the windows have to align, because you're totally right. The, the first level never matches the upper level. It's just having, it's, it's having faux columns under the window.
I think, I think
To take it to heart, that's all.
That's fair. I think the columns are meant to be more of like a inward detail.
Yeah.
As opposed to a suggesting a, a true column. We look
Yeah, that's all I would say.
We look now, there's currently similar faux columns flanking the wind, flanking the, the door that's going, going to remain, as well as the left and right kind of corners of the building. So I think it was also a response to, to those existing currently. But yeah, I mean, happy to explore other options.
The door that remains on the street facing side seems like in reality, it's further south of the center line of the building than it shows up in this. Is that being is it, you said it's being maintained, but it looks like it slides along the
It's almost as if the elevation is a mirror of what it's actually
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I did. Yeah, so we'll fix that.
It looks correct in your plan view, too. Your plan view looks correct, it's just your elevation view that looks mirrored.
Sure.
That may end up changing, because in reality, if you look on the street view, those pilasters barely, you know, miss being underneath the window. And you, you're not changing the position of the windows on the second story, so.
Right. Close square footage of what? Of the entire, the, the structure. The footprint is twenty-two hundred?
I have a question about the windows. We've got six over sixes and then nine over nine. That seems a little strange.
What was the comment? Sorry.
They have two sizes of windows with about six over six and top floor has nine over nine. So I'm just wondering why they aren't all six over six. I don't particularly like the windows anyway, but I don't think they're quite period enough, or anyway, doesn't matter, I don't care that much, but I'm just wondering why.
If you look at the trailer net, photo number one, you can see that that would be what? Six over six? And the windows that were proposed to keep at least the rough openings are approximately, I'd say, twelve inches taller.
Okay.
So I think it's just a response to kind of proportions of the
Large windows?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a correction to the identification of the receiver. This is currently listed as unlisted, but when there are type two action, replacement rehabilitation or reconstruction of the structure or facility in kind on the same site for the not upgrading building to meet building or fire codes, that's how to get type two a type two classification of the receiver. So my, my correction will be that this is not an unlisted action, this is a type two action.
The difference then, we don't have to do the apparently difference in reach.
Correct.
At least, you're still setting it for public hearing.
Yes, that's correct. Also, we have to come back. Yeah, all site plan review is a two, a two-step process.
As for the lights in the window, I'm going to, you know, paint I, I like the rectangular proportion. If we're talking the individual lights, I like the rectangular proportion of the six over six. But I like the window format, the window dimensions of the upper story. And there's numbers, greater number of divided lights, be more historic. I don't know how to strike the balance there, but overall, it, it doesn't really bother me as it is. Well, I can weigh in on it in this one.
Yeah, it's not a hill I'm going to try.
So is there a request to honor or not necessarily?
Just curiosity.
Okay, yeah, because you'll be back next month anyways. Just, it's something to consider. You don't have to make it, for me, I'm not asking for a a change to be made on that end, but maybe you wanted in the next month to play around with the design, but just a consideration, I think. Well, one thing is each individual beam of the upper end of our windows is fortunately the same. Simple thing. So that's a, that's a plus. So at least the density of the windows is so I, I personally, likely, the larger more likely to be apartments.
I mean, they're likely going to be simulated anyway, so we can do kind of anything.
Yeah, dividing, however, we're looking for them to be divided, in other words. I would say take a look at that, see if, if, if another change looks more uniform, maybe across both stories, otherwise it's not that off-putting, that's it. Anything else, streetside considered or comments about their street parking signage, anything that would go along with this?
So you said the sidewalks are, existing sidewalks are in good shape, that's what it says, and owner has a accessible
I believe so?
Yeah. So regarding the building next door, what's going to happen with that?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
So, I don't know.
I'm just wondering about fire and all that other stuff that's necessary to protect your building on the side.
Yeah, so there'd be the building code requiring fire separation between the two buildings.
Okay.
Their building's renovation will install a fire barrier on the north end.
Great. And I, one more question is, it's not in the floodplain, like, it's too
I don't know.
Warren, use the mic, it is what Eric's tapping about. Or do?
There you go.
Is the side in the floodplain?
I do not. Would that change anything?
Well
Just wondering.
I mean, there is, there's an overlay that would have a few requirements. I don't know how many of them would actually be applicable, but there would be the overlay. And that's a few extra things. As an existing structure and floors not being downloaded out, I don't think they're going to be changing the elevations of their, their stories.
Right.
Any other materials we needed to see to consider the application complete? I felt like it was a very complete application, personally. I, I wouldn't be me if I didn't say I'm happy to see the bike parking. And then I guess is the mudroom also sort of potentially an indoor storage space?
Oh, on the, the mudroom in the front?
I guess it's, is it from the front? It was the same now inside.
Oh.
Yeah.
Storage for what?
Could it accommodate bike parking, indoor bike parking in there?
I'm sure it could.
Cool. I'm happy.
It's, yeah, five and a half feet by almost eleven feet, so.
You're talking in the foyer in front of it there?
No, it's in the rear.
Yeah, it's on
doors number seven, eight.
Eight seconds.
So it's nineteen and twenty-two. Ah, that'd carry your bike upstairs.
Yeah, I got it. So individual, yeah, within each unit.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw that on the, on the broader site plan, but is it detailed on the floor plan? I just was curious about, about upstairs, it looks like it was adjacent to the
Maybe I, that we would install a place to lock your bike on the lower level. We could certainly put it on good stairs or somewhere where it's sort of out of, out of the weather.
Cool.
Um, there we get to the bottom of the
Sure.
I just had a couple of questions, I don't mind. The in the, in the parking area, I see the garage corral, is that five feet wide?
Well, so if we've got fifty feet wide, and we've got five nine nine foot wide parking spaces, that would be five feet remaining for trash. I'm not sure the corral is shown as being five feet, but the available area for trash would be five feet.
Okay.
I think maybe that'd be linked to the actual containers that are provided or purchased or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there was enough space for, you know, say that westernmost can actually navigate out. If, if people are, you know, if there are parked cars there, and then similarly being able to access the path, like, it's great, uh, bike parking spaces, but it is a seemingly a tight, tight squeeze.
I mean, it'd be the same as walking through the ballpark, basically. So I mean, you could
Yeah. Right, and then if you're trying to get your bike from the bike parking area to the alleyway, you know what I mean, like going through a ballpark and lot, that would be difficult. So to me, it's, yeah, it seems, it seems a bit tight, and I'm trying, and I began if the application is complete, that just walk up through this while you're here, so come back next time and have anything that needs to be altered, altered. It's been, I'm wondering if there's ways to perhaps align the path that pedestrians or cyclists would take with the garbage corral space. I don't know, the minimum for people to park in, which, I know, I know not understanding, in park lots, but I think in a road, what you're saying, if I could get away with that space.
James, if I can build upon your point, I'm, I'm trying to imagine somebody getting their kiddo out of the car into a stroller, where, how do you get to the path?
Yeah, and like, you know, the thing that people might not want, what, what I think would be strong, would be like four spaces with a nice entrance way in the center, and, you know, you could potentially store the trash bins, like, I don't know, somewhere in that zone. And that would be simple and attractive. And then the other thing I would just add is, I see there's, there's no collection areas there, that's fine, but just some sort of physical barrier to prevent people from like parking on the lawn, I think would be great, you know, that could be something as simple as like a log, in my opinion, I don't know if that's for code, but I don't think it needs to be concrete or anything really robust, but just some sort of physical barrier. And it would be great to see a tree, that, yeah. Affordable tree on that log as well.
I was actually going to say, like, possibly some some kind of landscaping could help with that issue as well.
Yeah, that's a good point, that, that would be, so I would just say, I don't I would prefer to see a continuous tree that would grow to be large and shaped by over something like
Is there a location you want that?
I, I, I don't have a preference of I guess towards the south side to provide more shade to the tenants would be great.
I have a logistics question. The way you have the garbage corral Troy now has those giant garbage cans that have to be wheeled out and make it out of the thing, and how would people do that? Because they would have to be taken out and put along the alley, wouldn't they? Or because sanitation's not going to come and get them and drag them out to the truck.
Yeah, that's sort of what I
Right, so they'd be removed from the corral and staged perpendicular to the road. And then when they're empty, they'd be put back in.
I'm kind of like, your part, so maybe like others have suggested four spaces is enough, that's thirty-six feet plus center aisle space, which
Sure.
A little curve, that's forty-six, that's thirty-six, that's forty, so ten more feet for the garbage around, to turn them around and face them, basically, I think. Possibly.
Yeah, that works.
Finaster?
I'm done.
You make a motion to declare the application, please?
I'll second. Okay, moving to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, after this, it would just be setting for public hearing. If it's type two, we do not need to declare lead agency. And we will not have to do a determination of, of negative effect. So are you good with next month as, uh, next meeting day or a public hearing date?
Yeah, is there anything I need to resubmit, or is this, I guess, any changes on the
Just the actions, site funding.
So you know the day of that age?
Yeah.
We may be fifteen. Maybe fifteen.
Got enough time?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to set public hearing?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is set public hearing for the May, what was the day? Sorry, May fourteenth, fifteenth? Twenty twenty-four Planning Commission Meeting, moving to, or, we need a second, sorry? We need a second, we need a second, okay. We had a second, we had a second, okay. Uh, moving to a vote, all in favor? I am, right, thank you.
Thank you.
I live at six twenty-two second half, so I don't know if this is the meeting I'm supposed to be at, or am I supposed to wait for a different meeting to?
So next month we'll do the public hearing, so there'll be a portion of this agenda items review where we'll have anyone who wishes to speak on that item. Have an opportunity to come up to the podium, present any comments or issues, and they'll be incorporated into the record. And if if there's something glaring that the commissioners uh become aware of, then we can address it with the applicant.
Okay, so what day is that, maybe?
Uh, the fifteenth of May.
Okay, I'll just get that, that, so. Warren?
I can talk to you.
Um.
Yeah, oh, good, good point, thank you, Bill. And we could also submit if you had a written comment, because. For instance, you weren't able to make it, or you just wanted something to be considered in advance of that meeting, you can email written comments to the uh city's staff. The planning department.
Yeah, I already spoke to Eric and uh I know it's a May and um. I don't know, this, what is that big hole back there behind second, on uh behind the building there? These are. Big hole in the ground, and it's, it's like a tunnel or something. I mean, I already submitted something in regards to this, but I'll probably, I'm gonna probably come back to the meeting, but I just. That was one of the things that nobody ever addressed, but they said, hey, it almost looks, I don't know what it looks like.
If you want me a second, I'll just dismiss the applicant.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're fine, and then I'm, I'm, we have only one agenda item, so I'm happy to just at least take a look. All right, um, if nothing else on your end, you're all set.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say, we've been kicking this apart, but we really appreciate the thoroughness of the application. It was really easy to understand.
Second.
Very. I think that's partially because we initially were told we didn't have to come to the planning board, so we submitted both. Here we are.
Thank you. Feel free to come up, I mean, we only had the one agenda item, so happy to answer and talk about. Yeah, we just want to, want to make sure you get the uh, your, your comments on.
On the podium. Yes.
We're just.
Yes, please.
What am I supposed to say?
I just wanted to entertain whatever your question was.
I was just, I just thought I was supposed to come today to present my position on this.
Oh, gotcha.
This development here.
Yep.
Well, there is a little thing and then, and on the other side, I know before when I spoke to somebody about it, they asked me if it was my property, I was like, no. But there's this tunnel thing, I don't know about this. I don't know about this stuff, it impacts my property. You know what I mean? And I've already spent a lot of money on my property. I spent thousands of dollars. I had to hire my own engineer. I had to have my roofer come back, I don't know how many times, because of that building next door.
Where's your property?
I six twenty-two second half.
Next door, okay.
You know, and I've lived in this, I've lived there for thirty-five years, so I know exactly how that community works.
We're not, I don't, does any, is anyone familiar with this hole? I'm not. It'd be great, yeah, we, we can ask um. Person photos or something of this for next month, but I, I don't think anyone is familiar with the issue that you're describing.
If they mow the lawn, I mean, it's right there. I mean, uh, you know what I mean? I, I'd have to mow the lawn because, you know, there. Nobody mows the lawn. I can't get to my, there's vines growing all over my yard. I can't access my, on the other side, somebody built a deck and I can't access my property on that side.
So maybe, maybe I'll, I'll turn and address it this way.
Uh huh.
The way these meetings proceed is the applicants come up with a proposal for their property. If their property or the modifications to it are going to have some impact.
Yeah.
On you, then then we. Hear those impacts from you or from other neighbors or residents in their region, and then we try to address or mitigate those. If this, if your issue you're describing right now is about a separate parcel, there's no path for us to acknowledge it. That's not our function.
Right, and I, I.
If it's just a nearby property that has an issue, unless you're saying it's this parcel that has that. That hole.
Yeah, it's in the back, it's in the, it's in the yard.
Okay, so.
And I'm always wondering, I'm like, what is down there?
If you would, uh, submit photos, um, email them into the city staff and file them as part of the public comment record.
Okay, I think it'll send forward.
And then we can review them prior to next meeting and consider it for our response to the applicant next month.
Because I can appreciate all his work, but I think there's more to a community besides the.
Yeah, that would be helpful, and and I would just add that, you know, it sounds like what the applicant is looking to do would be. Beneficial than if it's current, compared to its current state, you know, having someone there who's going to mow the lawn and, you know, they'd not be.
I've lived there thirty-five years.
Yeah.
Okay, I've been to the lawn in myself, okay?
Yeah, then, I mean, to be clear, we, that, that, we, it is our job to understand any issues you may bring down, so we just want to make sure that we have that. In hand, so then we can then tie to our, the city staff to, to find out more, like what, what exactly is going on with this whole, is it just superficial or is it? Getting into some sort of structural? Is it going to impact your, your, your parcel? Like, we just need to know. So, but we are tasked with making sure that we, we address those concerns.
All right. Okay.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, that was our only agenda item for tonight. Anything else you can sure just want to do address?
Y'all are doing the other.
Yeah, that'll be, it's kind of, so maybe I could make, I'll make a motion to adhere.
I second that motion.
Okay, uh, moving to a vote, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone, great.